All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. It's Monday, December 7th. We're at the 100 State Street in the Forum. The first item is roll call.
Roll call shows that all city councilors are present.
All right, next item is the pledge. If you'd all please stand and after the pledge, if you'd stay standing for just a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would like to take just a moment and ask us to take a moment of silence in remembrance of one of Beloit's finest individuals that I've had the occasion to meet last week. Reverend Floyd Prude, as you're aware, passed away very unexpectedly, and it's quite a loss to the city. It's quite a loss to his church community. It's obviously a loss to his family. His counsel, his wisdom, his judgment and input will be sorely missed. So if you'll join me for just a moment and remember the various ways we knew Reverend Prude. The next item is special order of the day and announcements. Three A is the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation, commonly known as Calea, and the report to the community. Acting Chief Jacobs, could you give us the report, please?
The history of law enforcement accreditation in Beloit started 20 years ago in 1989 and continues in 2009 with our sixth award for national accreditation. If you remember about accreditation, it provides the police department an opportunity to voluntarily demonstrate that we meet 459 specific standards that cover 38 subject areas. And these are world-class standards that police departments around the country should be involved with. We're one of the few agencies in the state that received this award, one of the first in the state, if not the first. And on behalf of the department, we'd like to thank you and the community for the support that you've given us over the years to be involved with this very important process. Captain Vince Shumey is here with me tonight. He's the accreditation coordinator, and he headed up the team that went over our records and made sure everything was in order, and we passed the muster again. So thank you very much. I believe that you have...
Yes. If you'd...I'm not sure who wants to come down and get it, but we have two things to award. We have the plaque and also then a special certificate of appreciation for Captain Vince M. Shumey for all the work that he did in securing the plaque. So thank you all very much. And now if councilors have any questions or not, but... Okay, the next item is a public hearing. There are none this evening. Next is item number five, citizens' participation. We have apparently this evening a number of individuals who wish to participate. I would remind you that this is your opportunity to address the council on issues that either will come before us or perhaps in the future might come before us. I would ask you to limit your comments to a three-minute period of time, and while I won't cut you off at the end of three minutes, I will make it plain that others may wish to speak and your time will be up. This evening, the first item or first person I have who likes to...would like to address us is Mr. Dwight Brass. Mr. Brass here? Mr. Brass?
Good evening. My name is Dwight Brass, and I volunteer for Robinson Elementary School, and I'm just starting this week to volunteer at Merrill Elementary School, which, as you're aware, was the site of a murder a little over a week ago. And it just so happened that the person who was killed, his car crashed into the parking lot at Merrill and hit, I think, four other cars. And then that person was declared dead at the hospital minutes later. And this happened about 1:00, which is at the end of the one-hour period that I'm scheduled to help out there in any way that I can. I'm not sure yet. I think it'll be helping kids read like I do over at Robinson. So I would have been walking out into the parking lot just as this car crashed into the parking lot. So this just brings it home a little bit, and one of the reasons that I started thinking about gun ownership and the strange phenomenon that Wisconsin is, I think, the last or one of the last two states that hasn't required automobile insurance. Now, the legislature did pass some halfway legislation that said after July of next year, you have to have car insurance, but law enforcement is prohibited from stopping anyone for lack of car insurance. So there's something like Illinois. I've lived in Illinois for several years in the past. I currently live here. They have an enforcement mechanism, and if you don't prove to the...in their case, it's the Secretary of State. I think here it's the Department of Motor Vehicles that you have insurance on your car. Eventually, they'll come and get your license plate. So they have an enforcement mechanism that's fairly good. Wisconsin will still not have that, so that's why I'm suggesting two things. One, that to possess a handgun in the city, that you carry liability insurance. Conceptually, this is a simple idea. And that if you operate a motor vehicle on the city streets, that you also...there be a city ordinance that says you shall have insurance. Now, I haven't worked out...I'm not an attorney. I'm an engineer. All the legal details that are required, but I have spent a few hours at the library looking at Wisconsin statutes. There's many, many Wisconsin statutes that restrict gun ownership as to when and where you can carry it and discharge of firearms, et cetera. So there's quite a bit of precedent for a requirement on gun ownership. This requirement is fairly innocuous. I'm a member of the NRA. I've been a member...I first became a member probably when I was 18 years old, which you can look at my gray hair and say, well, that's probably more than five years ago. So the NRA's mantra has been responsible gun ownership. And I call this the Responsibility Project, where if you're owning a handgun in the city, and the murders that occur in the city are...there was one strangulation, I think, and the others were firearms, and the firearms were handguns. The other part of what I'm suggesting to you for consideration is that there are a certain element of the enforcement where you would have a reward system that would be paid out of any fines that you might collect. And the fine I'm suggesting is $1,000 the first time. The second time, it's similar to other ordinances and statutes where the fine goes up after the first time, and then eventually the gun would have to be...or the car would have to be forfeited. So this is something I'm urging you to adopt. And maybe tonight would be the first reading. I'm not sure what the process is. I understand that the state legislature requires that local bodies go through a first and second reading, which, of course, they exempted themselves from having to do that. But this could be your first reading. The implication is it creates an opportunity for citizens to get their two cents worth in. This would be the first time that I know of in the United States that this type of thing has been done. And it would definitely put Beloit on the map nationally. And I think, in my opinion, is that this would be a very progressive. I hope that's not a dirty word. Some people think that progressive is somehow extreme liberal. I see it as looking toward the future rather than looking toward the past and not taking the approach that we...that we can't do anything. And I think this wouldn't solve everything. The people I've talked to fall into two camps. One, well, if we can't solve it 100%, let's do nothing, you know, and that's a certain mindset. On the other hand, if this will help a little bit, and it would be self-funded, then let's do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brass. The next individual that wants to address us, and apparently there are a number of people who may want to talk about the Lee Lane stoplight. I would ask, if you can, to make different points or new points, and rather than repeating the same thing four different times. First person I have is Elton Phillips. Mr. Phillips? Could you give us your address also, Mr. Phillips?
Yes, my name is Elton Phillips. I reside at 2540 Blarney Stone Drive. First off, I'd like to thank the council for hearing our concerns tonight. And our concern is the timing of the stoplight at the Lee Lane and Milwaukee Road intersection. I'd like to point out that transportation engineer Jason Dupree came to our Neighborhood Watch meeting in October, and he had stated to us at that time that the light was timed at 140 seconds. And although we thought that was a little optimistic, it seemed fairly close to reality. But this seems to conflict with some of the information that Jason prepared in a report where he did a time study. Unfortunately, I've not had time to stand at the stoplight in time cycles and count cars, so I can only speak my experience driving the Milwaukee Road corridor. Prior to late summer of this year, the light was actuated by traffic, and it seemed to operate rather smoothly. I did notice...I did not notice traffic backups at the other stoplights along the Milwaukee Road corridor. After the city of Beloit spent $40,000 on a study for and implemented an interconnected system is when the trouble began. The wait to exit Lee Lane onto Milwaukee Road seems excessive, and although Jason's report says otherwise, I've never seen more than five or six vehicles make it through the light when it did turn green before it turns red again. After spending four years standing in front of Morgan School, waiting for my daughter and watching the traffic, I can honestly say the backup of school traffic seems worse now. The relatively smooth, albeit congested, flow of traffic at quitting time at the school now seems hampered by the light. Nothing moves incoming or outgoing until the light turns green. This includes the traffic backed up on Milwaukee Road waiting to turn into Morgan on Lee Lane. Today, I drove to Aldrich to pick up my daughter. I made a point of timing stoplights for comparison. As I approached Lee Lane on Blarney Stone, I observed the light up Milwaukee Road was already red. After turning onto Lee Lane, approaching the intersection and stopping, I still waited 65 seconds for a green light. While on Cranston, the light at Shoapier turned red when I got to it. I only waited 35 seconds for a green light. Returning home from Robyn Drive onto Prairie, the light was only red for 30 seconds, and Prairie onto Cranston took only 45 seconds. So what we're asking is for you to look into a more agreeable compromise of the timing of what seems to be excessive time to get out of the subdivision and away from the school onto Milwaukee Road. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. The next individual who wants to speak is Mr. Ames, Bob Ames. Could you give us your address, Mr. Ames? And I wonder if you'd remove your chapeau. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Yes, I'm Bob Ames. I live at 1365 Central, and good evening, everybody. Mine will be very short and brief. I'm here to reference also that intersection in Milwaukee Road and Lee Lane, which I feel is becoming very congested and is a safety hazard as being a bus driver. I leave Morgan School at roughly 2:45. I take a left on Lee Lane to come up to Milwaukee Road. Sometimes there may or may not be a bus in front of me, but there's normally one behind me and maybe other few vehicles. With the buses, as wide as they are that come up that narrow road, traffic has parked...has come in waiting for to pick up their children, and they're all on the left side of the road as I'm heading towards Milwaukee Road. And at times, I have actually seen them, as this other gentleman just said, they have curved right around, and they're sitting on Milwaukee Road waiting to get in. Big hazard that I see here is that when you have the buses and the vehicles parked there, there is not enough room for another vehicle to get through. People that are sitting on Milwaukee Road that want to take a left on the Lee Lane cannot see all these other vehicles over here because the buses are blocking them. And they come around, and a few weeks ago, there was a person come through, had a full-size pickup, honking the horn, waving like crazy, wanting to get through. We ain't got no room to go. I'm not going to pull out on the road and jeopardize the seven children that I have in my bus so this person can get six feet down the road. So I would ask that maybe some of the council members, along with somebody from the city, come out there, monitor that thing for a few days, and see what we're talking about. And I'm speaking here on myself as a bus driver, and I found out about this because when I go into the schools to pick up my kids and stuff, I read their bulletin boards. And that's how I found out about this. And I told them that I would be more than glad to come down here and speak for them tonight, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ames. Next individual, Mr. Barter. Mr....
Rick Barter, 2560 Blarney Stone Drive, Beloit. I'm here to talk about the traffic at Lee Lane and Milwaukee Road as well. Just as a little background, I'm a member of the Turtle Ridge Neighborhood Watch group. We've been meeting quarterly for the past three years, and I'd just like to compliment the city and the chief for supporting Neighborhood Watch. And I would like to just put a plug in to all of us to encourage neighborhoods to adopt Neighborhood Watch. It's a great program. I go to breakfast with the chief meetings. I've been going the last three or four. They're excellent. And whatever we can do in every...any neighborhood, whether it's east side, west side, I think we all have a responsibility as councilors, as citizens of Beloit to encourage block by block to get...to get people involved in this Neighborhood Watch. It's an existing program. It's a wonderful program. But so we don't just come in here and complain about stoplights. I just want you to know that. But in any event, I just wanted to share that thought with you. The stoplight, we had a...we have meetings every quarter. Our Neighborhood Watch does, and we invited Jason Dupree to come and explain why the difference in the stoplight. Since that stoplight was put in, which is probably five years or longer, there was never a wait. It was...it was a very short wait, I should say, 15, 30 seconds at the most. And he'd turn left going out on Lee Lane to go east, and if you were on the other side of the road and going west, coming from Budweiser, Serta, or Finley Danker, the wait was very, very short. So that had...that changed this summer, and that's why we invited Jason to explain to us. He sent us a study, which is a little confusing, and I, you know, I just don't quite understand the study. I didn't have it at the time when he came. But the bottom line is, it wasn't ever like this before, and it's not just the residents. We're not asking for special treatment for Turtle Ridge. I spoke to both Tom Finley and Scott Weiser, and they're not happy either about the long light. They feel both that there should be a smoother transition into...onto Milwaukee Road. And I think Counselor President Vanny Borgard got a copy of the email that Tom Finley, I think, sent to you. So they're not happy either. So it's not just the residents. It's the businesses over there also. As the gentleman said, there's an ingress problem, too. That's an issue. That whole corner is just not real traffic-friendly. Tina Hanson, I got an email from Tina today, and she is not happy at all about the light. And just to quote her, that they're all concerned with the traffic backup at pickup and dismissal time due to the timing of the light. I'm recommending that the city reconsider the timing of this light and include, you know, I know a lot of money was spent on the study, but include some of the residents that live there and have businesses in the school district to be a part of that situation. So I guess I'm getting gonged here by Mr. Vanny Borgard, so I'm over my limit probably. So I'm done talking. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Arnie Brostein?
Yes, my name is Arnie Brostein, 1870, Lee Lane, Beloit, Wisconsin. I've lived at that residence since September of 2004. Prior to that, my folks lived there from 1973, so I've got a good history on that light. And like they say, up until early this summer, it wasn't a problem. All of a sudden, it tripped, and I've timed it myself, five different days, five different times. It's running between a minute and 38 seconds to a minute and 43 seconds. I've timed it on Saturday. I've timed it on Tuesday. I've timed it on Thursday. And I timed it on Friday also. And the problem with that is, it's also backing down in front of our residents on the east side. There's a row of walnut trees. The people are parking into the street. They're parking right behind the driveway. I had to walk when our mailman was earlier. I would walk between the front of one car and the rear of one car just to get my mail. Danny Gloria Trail resided the same residence. His wife Gloria works at Clayton School. She leaves at 2:40 in the afternoon. There's cars lined up there. She's almost backing into these cars every day. And when you roll up to the light, if you're going to turn right, I mean, if you're going to turn left to go out to the ice system, you're going to sit there for a long time. It's going to be aggravating. I work for Chrysler, so I have my first shift, and in the morning, I'll sit at that light. I've timed it then, too. And like I said, a minute and 38 seconds to a minute and 43 seconds. Now, if you're making a right-hand turn, there's no traffic. That's not a problem. But as you get, like, on a Friday or on, like, a Monday, you've got six, seven cars backed up, and with these children crossing guards, I'm worried for their concern. Because you've got cars on the left and the right side. You've got sixth graders, fifth graders trying to direct traffic. And it's a hot intersection. That should have an adult from the school come out for, what, 20 minutes, and direct the traffic twice a day. And that's...wouldn't much...what I'd like to have some feedback on, because this is dangerous for those little kids out there. They're going to get hit. Somebody's going to get hit out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brostein. And the last individual that I have who signed up to...would like to speak is Anna Kotke.
Hi, I'm Anna Kokati.
Excuse me, I apologize.
That's all right. I live at 1858 Moore Street, and I am also a member of the Parks Commission. And it's been brought to my attention...I'd like to speak about the naming of the property at 540 Colby Street. The Parks Commission went through a naming process for this piece of property, and it's been brought to my commission through several...brought to my attention through several people I know, plus reading it in the newspaper, that several members of the council are questioning the name that was voted upon being Lucius Lyon State Line Prairie. It's my understanding that the concern is that because this gentleman basically made a mistake and incorrectly identified what would be the proper state line. I am concerned about the council not voting to support this naming decision because two different commissions actually approved this, the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission. And the city has set up the citizens' commissions for a reason, and if the citizens were greatly against the idea of naming the prairie this area for this gentleman, I would think it would have come up beforehand. So one concern of mine is of supporting what two other commissions have already voted to approve. The other thought that crossed my mind is, quite frankly, when I read the newspaper article about the concern over it, I was left scratching my head, thinking, maybe everyone forgot how to not be quite so serious after going over the budget review. Because if it weren't for the mistake that this man made, we wouldn't have nearly the downtown Beloit that we have now. A lot of that property would be over in Illinois. And instead of us being a really nice city with a really nice downtown and...no offense to South Beloit, but South Beloit being viewed as the suburb to us, it could have very possibly been the other way around if it hadn't been for this mistake. I ask that you approve the naming of the site at 540 Colby Street as Lucius Lyon State Line Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kokati. The...anyone else wish to speak who hasn't given me one of the sheets? If you do, please step forward, give us your name, and let us know what's on your mind.
Is it possible that we can ask Ms. Kokati about what they went through for the naming of the property?
I don't think so. I think...I think this isn't really a discussion time. This is their time to present to us. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda. This evening, the Consent Agenda consists of items A through K. First, do any councilors wish an item removed from the Consent Agenda?
D, please.
Mr. Levy, D?
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? All right, the Consent Agenda then consists of items A through K with the exception of 6D. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move approval?
Second. Ms. Forrest, Mr. Levy. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. 6D is a resolution authorizing final payment for public works contracts, C-09-17, Harvey Street Reconstruction. Mr. Levy or Mr. Botts? Or Mr. Botts, maybe you can start, Mr. Botts?
No, we...no, just a quick question as a routine question. Are we comfortable with the job that's been done, and are we satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve 6D? All right, Ms. Johns?
Second.
And Mr. Dench. Any further council questions or discussion? I'll call a question. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Item number seven is 7A, a proposed ordinance to amend section 14.06 per N2, 14.06 per N4, 14.06 per N6 per N A and per N B, 7.11 per N2, 7.22 per N6 per N A, 8.20 per N4 per N A, and to repeal section 7.185 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to rental permits, rental inspections, and local agents. This is before the council for a second reading. Ms. Christensen?
This ordinance amendment essentially does three things. Changes who issues the rental permits from the city clerk to the housing services staff. It removes a local agent requirement, which did not really provide us much relief in code enforcement, getting them corrected. And then it actually just modifies the permit cycle to just reflect the current cycle, which is not changing. And you held a first reading at your last meeting, and it's on your agenda for approval tonight.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Is there a motion to approve 7A?
Move to approve 7A.
All right, Ms. DeForest?
Second.
And Mr. Haynes. Additional counselor questions or comments? Questions of Ms. Christensen? Mr. Forrest?
I'd just like to make the comment that I went out of my way to solicit feedback from the Property Owners Association, and they were in support of this proposed ordinance change.
I had...I had no telephone calls or contact one way or the other on it. But additional counselor questions or comments? All right, I'll call a question. All in favor of 7A, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Very well, motion carries 7-0. 7B is a proposed ordinance to create Section 15.11 of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit relating to regulating hotels, motels, inns, and other transient lodging facilities. Ms. Krieger, this is before the council for a first reading. Ms. Krieger, can you give us the staff report, please?
Sure. The ordinance before you is a proposal from the DAG unit of the Police Department. There is currently a state law that requires hotels to keep a register of its guests, and also to keep those records for a period of one year. This ordinance makes that a local requirement. And in addition to those keeping the same registration requirements and the same records retention, it would require the hotels to provide law enforcement access to that information when requested. And it also prohibits the providing of false information for the registers and provides a penalty for the same. The ordinance will assist the Police Department in the implementation of a new program called the Beloit Hotel Interdiction Program, or BHIPE for short. Officer Andy Arnold with the Police Department will be here to speak about that in just a moment. The ordinance is patterned after other Wisconsin communities that have similar ordinances. We have met with all of the hotel owners and managers, as well as the chamber and other business leaders, and there's overwhelming support for this ordinance. We believe that the ordinance strikes a good balance between the needs of the Police Department, the city, and the hotels, while avoiding the unnecessary inconvenience to guests or the hotel staff itself. With that said, I'd like to introduce Officer Andrew Arnold of the Drug and Gang Unit. Both he and his colleagues have been working very hard for several months to get this program up and running. So I'll invite him down here to briefly go through a very brief PowerPoint.
Thank you, Ms. Krieger. And thank you, everyone, for giving us a few minutes of your time tonight. The ordinance proposed, as covered by Ms. Krieger, really its inception was rooted in the Beloit Hotel Interdiction Project. But once we started investigating a little bit, making some contacts with the hotels, there's actually a lot of support for it regardless of the program. Although the ordinance is written so, hotel management is compelled to provide us access to the registry, I want to stress that overwhelmingly, we've never had a problem with that. There's been 99 times out of 99, I've had cooperation in every hotel and motel that we've dealt with. The issue that the hotel management staffs really enjoy about this is if it's a city ordinance, it takes some of the pressure off them in the eyes of their guests about cooperating with police. And it's easier for the motel management staff to say, hey, we are compelled by city ordinance to provide this information. And they look at it as a very nice passing the buck over to us. The Hotel Interdiction Project has been under construction for about a year now. And as Ms. Krieger mentioned, I've met with all the hotel management staffs that it will directly affect on the Milwaukee Corridor. We've also invited the Beloit Inn to partake in this. We were scheduled to sit down and talk with them about two weeks ago. But there was a spike in local activity that directed our resources elsewhere. And that meeting's to be rescheduled at our earliest possibility. I have a message in with the management staffs. The program overview basically describes us trying to establish a partnership with the management on-site. As mentioned earlier, there's application for the ordinance and more than the interdiction program. The interdiction program itself is a movement to establish a personalized relationship between the Drug and Gang Unit, in addition with the Say Street Federal Task Force that operates in town here, just to open up lines of communication between us and the staffs working at this motel, the motel industry on the I-90 corridor. We've documented beyond a shadow of a doubt that there are a lot of transient criminals, gang members, and narcotics dealers that travel the I-90 and I-43 corridors that stop in Beloit, whether it's directly related to our community or not. In the past, there have been some incidents that are tied directly to our community. And there has also been incidents where Beloit was just a random meat spot for no apparent reason other than its convenience, its close proximity to the interstate system, shopping, and eating without really having to go to the inside of town. We've dealt with a number of incidents where, again, the hotel staffs have been cooperative in helping us resolve some situations, including the location arrest of some federal fugitives. So we know that there's a need for the program. The Hotel Interdiction history goes back to 1985. Was the first Hotel Interdiction Unit was established by the LA Police Department. And it was established out of need as they started discovering, quite by accident, they were having high incidents of contacts with felons and drug trades at their hotels and their motels. And they actually developed a specialized unit to deal with that. Several larger communities soon followed suit. And the training that the Beloit Police Department's Drug and Gang Unit was provided was given by the Cleveland, Ohio Director of their Hotel Interdiction Program. What are the advantages to the hotels? Well, the Hotel Interdiction Team basically serves as a watch program for the communities and the businesses out there. It's always been kind of our credo and our ethos to provide as high a level of service to everyone we can. One might argue that, well, if there's someone traveling off of I-90 that happens to stay in one of our hotels, that might not necessarily be a problem for our community. I would beg to differ, as we've had a number of incidents occur at the hotel that involve people that aren't tied to our community at all. And I most certainly think that we owe it to the businesses out on I-90 to make sure we're delivering a high level of service. I know the Patrol Division works very, very hard in doing their business checks out there. But this is a little bit more personalized program where agents and officers of the Drug and Gang Unit and the Task Force will be making daily or every other day contact with the management, just kind of monitoring the activity at the hotels, and really, in essence, looking for certain indicators that might perceive that there's a little bit more to be looked into. It also helps contribute to a drug-free environment for the guests and the employees at the hotels, the I-90 corridor. And part of the program involves a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week direct access to one of the agents and officers involved in the interdiction team. Everyone knows that it's always nicer if you have that personal connection when dealing, especially with something that can be potentially as intimidating as calling law enforcement for help. I know a lot of people always apologize for calling us because they don't want to bother us. But that personal connection is really the main mission behind the interdiction team, is making the hotels aware that we're here to help them out. What are the advantages for the police? Well, part of the program involves providing training to both the management staff and the front desk staff, and the housekeeping and maintenance staffs of the properties on the I-90 corridor, to have them kind of look for certain indicators for us. We're a very, a small but active unit in a very small but active jurisdiction. And we most certainly like to work with the highest amount of efficiency that we can. If we know where to direct our resources, that's always a great advantage for us. So if the hotel staffs become, for lack of a better term, the eyes and ears of the police, and can give us a heads up when they think that there might be something suspicious going on on one of their properties, it helps us respond to that more expeditiously and more efficient than when we're operating as two separate entities. It would also help with the generation of, for lack of a better word, intelligence. We do try and track trends in the city, so once again, to improve our efficiency in delivering services. It's a community policing project, and as you know, the Beloit Police Department has embraced the concept of community policing since long before I was employed by it. And there's always the possibility of large-scale seizures of cash and/or drugs. We've noticed by looking at other programs and some of the incidents we've had without an established program, that this has been the case. And this has been the case occasionally in our community. If we can get the big fish, when we try, it's always kind of a nice notch on the wall. We spend a lot of time trying to direct our resources in the best manner possible. And really, once the initial training is completed, it's a relatively small investment of our labor for potentially large returns. I don't think it's too much to ask our unit or agents to make contact with the hotel businesses anywhere from three to five times a week for anywhere from between 30 to an hour and a half, 30 minutes to an hour and a half. Why Beloit? As I mentioned just briefly earlier, Beloit's geographical and jurisdictional characteristics makes it ideal for the Hotel Motel Interdiction Program. As a community, we've struggled with an active drug market for years. We have a number of lower-end motels that are located deeper within the city limits. But more in particularly, in regards to the Hotel Interdiction Program, we have a cluster of mid-range hotels located at the intersection of I-43 and I-90. It's particularly attractive to travelers, once again, because of its location off the interstate system and all the amenities that Beloit offers out on the Milwaukee Corridor, including dining and shopping, and close proximity to larger communities such as Rockford, Chicago, Milwaukee, and Madison. Awesome. Implementing a program, getting started, we're specifically targeting properties that we think we'll experience success with. That would be by name, the Roadway Inn, Holiday Inn Express, the Oconalodge, the Fairfield, and the Comfort Inn. We originally included the Hampton Inn, but as I understand, they're not at the process yet where we'd have a management team to meet with. We've included them and sent them letters, but we know that they're still presently under construction, and that would be a business maybe for us to try and catch when they're a little bit further down the line in their development. Who is not included on there is the Beloit Inn. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we're most certainly not trying to be exclusive. The Beloit Inn is invited to partake in the program, and we're going to share our resources with the Beloit Inn. However, statistically, we feel that we'll have, I guess you could say, the most bang for our buck located on the I-90 corridor by the interstate system. We basically intend to form that partnership with the local hotel staffs. We're going to provide the training that we mentioned earlier for hotel staff members and indicators of criminal activity. And that's in addition to our regular routine checks of the registry, which is the direct application of the ordinance. As far as guidelines for the hotel, we're just asking that report all suspected drug trafficking information. We ask the hotels that they request valid forms of photo IDs from their patrons at registration and make copies of them. This is especially true of people paying cash. We know that sometimes it's a little bit harder to track people when they're not paying by debit card or by credit card. We'd like to make employees aware of the local reward programs that we have here specifically in Beloit, that would be the Crime Stoppers Program. And we've had great success with working with the Crime Stoppers Program in the past. And we'd like to caution hotel staff against snooping for law enforcement. This is simply asking them to act in a way that we would expect every good citizen to act and report things that they consider to be suspicious to the proper authorities. We'd like to educate the staff regarding the management's intention of cooperating with law enforcement, so there's no confusion between the line worker of the hotel and the management of the hotel. And we most certainly can't stress enough that we're not asking anybody to take independent action. We're simply asking them to call the police if they see suspicious activity. As far as our guidelines, we're going to work very hard to make sure we're available 24/7, including a duty agent that might carry the phone during holidays and weekends and traditional off-times for the investigators that work the Drug and Gang Unit. We'll assist them in all criminal matters, not just drug and gang matters. And if it's something that necessarily doesn't pertain to our services, we'll most certainly get them pointed in the right direction and get some resources out to them that can solve the problem. One of the big principles that we're going to strive to make sure we take care of is, I understand the hotels are a business out there. We don't want to interfere with any business practices. Most of the operations involve the use of plainclothes, officers, investigators, and unmarked cars. We're trying to avoid very hard of parading marked units and marked squad cars to the parking lot, as to put the general sitters injury, their feelings at ease. And we're trying to kind of keep our investigative tactics out of the mainstream, so it's a behind-the-scenes thing. We're most certainly not trying to damage any of the business opportunities that the hotels have out there. And we'll most certainly exhaust all our other investigative tactics prior to approaching a patron on the property or in a hotel room. This program really depends on the team effort. At the very worst-case scenario, if nobody embraces it on the hotel side, it will remain status quo and will still experience the benefit from the ordinance being passed. The very best-case scenario, I really think that there's potential good things that can happen on the I-90 corridor as far as seizures and significant arrests. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have at this time.
Just one question. Now, is this a separate team from the Gang and Drug Unit? And if not, are we pulling resources from one area and putting them into something else? And if we're doing that, what's going to happen to the area we're pulling them from?
This is a collaborative effort by the current staff of the Drug and Gang Unit. That staff, which actually, it switches up in January, will have two new officers rotating into the Drug and Gang Unit. So January was the most likely, or I guess, the most common-sensical time to try and get the program up and running. Officer Mackey and Officer Sales will join us. We'll predominantly handle the lion's share of the work. I know that we always have been augmented and supported by the Federal Task Force in town whenever we've asked for their help, as we try to help them when they need additional resources. So agents will most certainly have some contacts out at the hotels as well. To more directly answer your question, it doesn't require the creation of any new resources or any new teams. It's handled internally by existing entities already. And the only strain on resources initially will be trying to get the training provided to all the properties outside.
Okay. Mr. Forrest?
So just to clarify, excuse me, so DAG unit officers will be the ones that are checking in with the hotel staff on a three-to-five-times-a-week basis? It won't be patrol officers?
Well, yes and no. As far as the interdiction team goes, just to clarify, the ordinance obviously covers all situations and all scenarios, which, once again, the hotel staffs have been very appreciative and supportive of the ordinance being brought to the floor. So it kind of takes liability off them. But as far as the interdiction program, the interdiction program will be conducted specifically by the Drug and Gang Unit and the Task Force, and not by uniform patrol officers.
Okay. And then also, I wanted to ask, I didn't see, is there a penalty to the hotel or motel if they don't comply with, will they refuse service to a patron who does not have a photo ID? Have you talked about penalties for lack of cooperation and making sure that photo ID is obtained?
Well, there's penalties included in the ordinance for people that provide false identification at the time of check-in, which is separate than the state statute. As far as our angle, the Drug and Gang Unit isn't seeking to gain compliance by punishment. Everything has been very voluntarily cordial so far. There is no punishment that I've seen for a hotel not cooperating with the Police Department in the interdiction process. As far as, once again, the inception of the ordinance came from the interdiction program. But I also want to separate them and say that the ordinance is going to be a positive for the city and all law enforcement, not just the interdiction team. And then the interdiction team will only work with the properties, I think, that will work with us. I don't think we're interested in trying to hammer cooperation out of anybody.
I was just wondering, because this ordinance covers all hotels and motels, not just the ones that you're targeting for the interdiction team. So there is no penalty? Okay, you answered my question.
Yeah, and I would defer that question maybe a little bit better to Ms. Krieger.
Okay.
If, I mean, the hotels are required to keep the register and provide that information.
And state statutes.
If a guest were to come to the hotel and not want to provide that information, the hotel would certainly turn them away, and to be in compliance with both the state law and our local ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would have one question. You indicated that the primary's focus will be on the Milwaukee Road Corridor establishments. What about the other ones, on Highway 51, or on the west side of Madison Road, or even downtown? I assume they will be in the mix. And while the focus won't necessarily be on them, if they need to, they can call on your, for your services?
Absolutely. And I want to stress, I guess, that this might imply that nothing is going on at the hotels and motels currently, and that would be a false representation. The Police Department does actively respond to calls for service at both the motels and hotels located within, I guess, what you would consider the more interior of the town and the I-90 corridor. I know our officers regularly do business checks. I can say personally, several times I've been out at the businesses established on 51 and Madison Road, and off of Manchester, down by South Beloit there. We've spent a lot of time in those properties as well, too. Just during the course of our daily investigations, they take us to those properties. The interdiction process is focused more on maybe catching things that potentially come in off the highway that we wouldn't normally be dealing with within the regular course of our investigations.
All right, any additional counselor questions?
Can I make one more comment?
Certainly.
Officer Arnold, just want to thank you for this proactive measure. I think it's wonderful. And when I asked in our briefing if the hotels and motels had been contacted, I'm pleased, it seems like this has actually been developed in cooperation with them. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to lay 7B over to our next meeting? I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, Mr. Haynes and Mr. Dench. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Very well. The next item is item number eight, appointments. There are none this evening. Item number nine is counselor activities and upcoming events. It's been three weeks. My short-term memory after my knees is the next thing to go, but I don't remember which way I started from. Mr. Noonam, can you start us?
I would like to share your comments in the profound loss of one of the city's greatest leaders in its history, Reverend Prude. What he has done over the last four decades for this community will never be forgotten, and his contributions were enormous, and was a great friend, and will be missed sorely by so many. What an incredible outpouring from so many people all around the country. What an incredible outpouring from so many people all around the country over this weekend. I think there'll be others that'll talk about that probably later, but he'll be missed and will never be forgotten. On that note as well, also today marks the anniversary of terrible events in Pearl Harbor. And just wanted to take a moment that we never forget that terrible loss of 2,400 Americans that were lost this day.
Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to everyone, the sixth annual holiday asle is this Friday night from 5:00 to 9:00. There are 40 locations within the downtown with various artisans and unique gift ideas, live music, children's events, and holiday treats. So bundle up and come on down. Also, during the holiday asle, Bagels &amp; More is celebrating their grand reopening. And if you haven't seen the new facade, you have to go down and see it. It's a great addition to the downtown area. So congrats to the Sekirskis on a wonderful facade.
All right, Mr. Haynes?
Nothing to add today.
Mr. Levy?
I would like to also echo Counselor Noonam's comments about Reverend Prude. He was my pastor and mentor and friend for several years. But I really want to thank everyone who came out on behalf of the church. I want to thank the city manager who came on and was part of the memorial service. And I can't express our gratitude enough for the Beloit Police Department, our Captain Duncan, and the reserves that were there Saturday, Friday night in the cold weather, and then also Saturday, helping direct traffic and getting, I would say, over 1,000 people to a building that seats about 650 or 700. Getting them parked and organized and making sure everything ran smoothly. So to the city and as a whole, thanks for stepping up and assisting with that. It was greatly appreciated by the family and also by the church family as well. So I just want to make that public comment as well. Thank you.
Mr. Dench?
Nothing.
Mr. DeForest?
Yes, I would just like to say how much I enjoyed the downtown holiday parade the day after Thanksgiving. I think we had more floats than we've ever had and more creative floats than ever. Fantastic turnout. It helped that the weather was cooperative, but it really was an enjoyable event. The light really shined that night. I also want to take this opportunity, if I could emphasize, and unfortunately, some members in the audience who did speak during citizens' participation have left, but just to remind residents that when concerns are brought to our attention during citizens' participation, we're not really at liberty to comment on them at the time since they haven't been noticed in our agenda. And I just want to assure residents that when they do come to speak with us, that we do hear what they're saying and we will, as individuals and as a body, follow up on their concerns. We don't want them to feel ignored. It's just that, given due process, we can't comment on concerns that are brought forward that night. So I'd just like to make sure I make that point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeForest. The only thing I have to add to the comments is that I did have the opportunity last evening to attend the winter concert over at Eaton Chapel on the Beloit College campus. And I would like to compliment Director Susan Rice and the Masterworks Chorus on a wonderful presentation. It's certainly a kickoff to the holiday season that's available to all of us in the community. And it was a wonderful event. I don't know if other counselors attended or not. I didn't see anyone. I did see City Manager Arf there, and we were getting into the holiday spirit, I guess you'd say. But it was a wonderful event, and I would encourage people to check it out next year. Item number 10 is city manager's presentation. This evening, we have a presentation, a timely presentation, I might add, on winter snow removal program. Mr. Botts, that's B-O-T-T-S, if anyone needs to know.
364-2929 is the number to call.
There you go. It's not Vandy Bogard or it's not Haynes, it's Botts.
First of all, I've got a couple of things I'd like to share with the community and the council as well, is that we do have a brochure they're putting out that gets some explanation about some of the snow ice control measures that we take. And so that's just some light information to give some overviews on things. Also, we have a pamphlet that has been handed out that just gets some winter information, just more updates on all the types of programs we do. A couple of the things we like to remind the community about is sidewalk snow removal. You're responsible to remove the sidewalk's snow within 48 hours of the end of the storm. Also, for street parking, you need to make sure during a snow emergency that your vehicles are off the street until the emergency is ended. And typically, we try to put out in all the news medias when the emergency begins and when it ends. And this is for snow removal purposes, so we can get the streets cleared in a timely manner. It's not easy when there's a car parked out on the street and you've got to go around it and then there's a big snow pile there that freezes and whatever and makes it very difficult. So the more cars we can get removed, the better. We do have a number of areas around town that we know we have issues with car removal. And we personally contact those folks with letters typically and letting them know, reminding them that if a snow emergency occurs, they need to try to move their cars. We've also indicated locations around town where people can go park their cars if they need a spot to park them off the streets. There are a couple of public parking lots that there's locations for people can park And if one of our vehicles causes damage to your property, such as terrace damage or happens to strike a vehicle or hit a mailbox, make sure that you contact our department at 364-2929 and report those so that we can properly take care of those situations as they occur. And during the holidays, we do change our garbage and recycling collection times and dates depending on, in this case, typically Fridays will be picked up on Saturday. We get moved back a day because of the holiday wave falls. And we also will be picking up Christmas trees and wreaths after the holidays until January 15th. That's on your normal trash pickup day. So if you put those things out to the curb, we'll make sure they have no wires in the ornament. So if you have a wreath, if you want to take the wires out, then we can dispose of it that way. If you don't, put it in your trash, because we can't take it to leave one if it's full wires. They don't accept those types of things. And also, we've been advertising in the local news media, this is the flyer that came out in the shopping news. The Daily News also has, had a similar type one-page article explaining all the similar information that is described. So we're trying to get the information out to the public as much as possible so that we can keep everybody informed and try to make it a successful season for us all so we don't get any problems with it. We've worked well with our police department on trying to notify people who do park in the streets and so that we can help them move their cars. And also on the city website, we do post these on a, as soon as we issue a snow emergency, we post those on the website so people can, you know, it's another location to look up. If you have a question about whether or not a snow emergency is going to be called, typically when we see a prediction that the snow's going to be at three inches, we'll call an emergency. So keep that in mind if you're watching the news and you see that's going to be predicted for that. Go to the website, check out your local media to find out whether or not an official snow emergency has been called. But typically, if we have a forecast that it's going to reach that point, we will make the call. Because that way, it'll get people off the streets and we can clean them properly in a timely manner. That's basically all the information we want to provide. If you have any questions, I'm certainly going to help you out with some answers.
I would have a question, Mr. Botts. Can you briefly outline the, when the plows go out, how deep it needs to be, when you make the decision to start, and then the prioritization of the main roads, the arterials, the side ones? Just, Bree, I know you could get into the minutia here, but that's probably not necessary. But just a general explanation, everybody, well, my place wasn't plowed yet, how come? And can you kind of prioritize and show or tell folks how you do it?
Okay, it's probably a little bit different on each storm, just depending on how the event takes place. But typically, we'll start plowing when it becomes three inches. Then we'll put the plows out and start doing that. And we start with the main arterials first. It'll be like Riverside Drive, Milwaukee Road, Cranston Road, all the main arterials get plowed first, because we want to make sure that the people can move around the community. And then we move to the secondary streets, and then we move to the residential streets. So if your street hasn't been plowed, it will be. Don't think it's not going to get plowed, because they'll be there. But it all depends on the event. If, in other cases where it snowed all day, we've had guys out and we keep trying to keep the main streets open first. We will not get to your residential streets until we can, are secure that the snow is ending, we can get the main streets open, then we'll move to the residential streets. Because if we get off the mains and they fill up with snow, then we can't get back. I mean, it makes it more difficult to get back on those that move to snow. We want to keep it moving so that we can provide transportation around the community. We typically work with our police and fire departments. If they need access into an area, we're there to provide the support to them to get their vehicles to whatever area they need to get to if they, you know, don't feel comfortable in taking their own vehicles into those areas.
Can you speak to the brining process and the beet juice process? We've all heard about that.
Absolutely. As you know, we've been very active in using liquids to, for anti-icing purposes. Typically, we'll go out prior to a storm event. You'll probably see our vehicles out tomorrow spraying the streets with brine. Basically, that's a 23% salt solution that we put on the streets. It's a lot less, or say it's a lot more ecologically friendly to the streets and everything else, because it's a lot less than having rock salt laying on the street or laying on your terraces. And so we'll spray that stuff out. Now, the temperatures are supposed to be relatively mild during the first part of the event. As it gets colder, we'll use a blend. We'll put brine with beet juice and spray that because it melts the snow at a lower temperature. Or we can use calcium chloride with that mix and get down to an even lower temperature. So if it's, you know, we can melt snow down probably below zero if we need to, depending on the mixtures of the chemicals we can put out on the streets. We certainly don't like to do that. It gets more expensive to put that stuff out. But it just depends on the event. I mean, our purpose is to try to make it a safe travel passage for all people using our roadways. And so if we can do something that will make that more safely done, we will do that.
All right. Other counselors have additional questions? I didn't mean to monopolize his time.
Quick comment. I just wanted to reiterate the comment to the public about please be patient, particularly during a significant storm event, as we have forecasts now beginning tomorrow afternoon and running through parts of Wednesday. We do the streets in a prioritized fashion. There is a method to it to keep the city open, not only for the public to move around, but so we can move around our emergency vehicles as needed. So you may not see a plow on your side street or your cul-de-sac for a number of hours, but the city plows every street and every cul-de-sac and every alley, and everything will be opened up as quickly as we can as the storm abates. So please be patient, give us some time, and we will get into all the side streets and cul-de-sacs before the cleanup process is concluded.
One other thing I would like to add is that the comment always comes up of why do you fill my driveway with snow? Well, the plow pushes it down the street, and when you've done a nice job and cleaned out your driveway, that snow finds a nice empty spot to go to, and so falls in your driveway. One way to try to avoid that is if you clear your street area, you know, I guess it'd be along the direct, our plows always come, you know, basically from the right. I mean, they're coming along to get into your, you know, traveling the direction of normal street travel. So if you clean the street out there, it'd be less likely they're going to take and push that snow into your driveway. Or another way to do it is you want to cut a notch back into your terrace where that snow will fall before it gets to your driveway is another thing to try. So those of you who have lots of time and like to have a big snow blower that just eats up snow everywhere, you can carve all these little notches as long your terrace and the snow will fall into those. But other than that, I guess, you can either wait till the plow comes by, or you can do it a couple of times like most of us do. Yeah. And don't get mad at the guys doing it. They don't really like doing that, and I know we've had several issues where we've had things thrown at our truck after we've gone by. But, you know, don't blame those guys. They're just driving, so. And they do a really nice job. I mean, our guys who go out and work this stuff, it's, some days it can be very long, and it's a challenge trying to get around the community sometimes. So we do have a great crew of people who work these events for us. But if you do have any questions, just call 364-2929 and they'll try to help you out with their, with your answers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Botts. Oh, Mr. DeForest, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, President. Along that note, could you please pass on from this body our thank yous to the snowplow staff, because I know they will be up very, very late probably Tuesday night and Wednesday. So if you could let them know, we appreciate them.
They'll probably start early in the morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, we sure will. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Botts. The next item on the agenda is item number 11, reports from boards and officers, or boards and city officers. 11A is a resolution approving the naming of a park located at 540 Colby Street as Lucius Lion, State Line Prairie. Matter was laid over from our November 16 meeting. And if my memory is correct, there was a motion and a second, and there was quite an extensive bit of discussion, and we laid it over until today's date. I don't know that we need another motion. I don't recall who made it or who seconded it, but I think we can simply proceed with that original motion and have discussion if we wish further discussion, and then we'll ultimately call the vote. So, does anyone wish to start us off? Mr. Dench?
Okay. Mr. President, our last meeting, we did engage in considerable discussion regarding this subject. And I'd like to touch on a few of the points that were brought forward at that meeting. Counselor DeForest correctly, I believe, pointed out that the Parks Commission, having exercised its due diligence and having found proper, followed the proper procedures, ought to have the support of the city council on this proposal. Now, we could conceive of circumstances in which the council might not support the decision of a public commission, if, for example, proper procedures had not been followed or if the proposal came to us surrounded by controversy. In fact, however, the prescribed procedures were followed in this case, and of the 14 citizens who comprise the Parks Commission and the Plan Commission, only one of them voted against the measure. Of the arguments that were voiced against this proposal, two stood out. One was that we would forever lose the chance to name the park for someone else at some future date. In response to that, I would point out that this park does not belong entirely to the city of Beloit. At least a third of it lies in South Beloit, and it would be presumptuous of us to name it for someone important only to our own history. This park, like the state line which runs through it, is something that we will share with South Beloit, and the name that has been proposed nicely recognizes and celebrates this. The other argument against the proposal suggested that it didn't meet the criteria for naming parks. So I'd like to read again two passages from the adopted guidelines for naming parks. First of all, under scope, we find this language, "It will identify significant historical, geological, and ecological areas located within the community. It would also give suitable recognition to individuals who have contributed to the growth and development of the city." And under guidelines, we find this language, "Parks may be named for a geologic, geographic, or historical feature inherent to the area." Now, some 175 years ago, Lucius Lyon stood on a bluff overlooking the Rock River, almost directly behind where we're sitting now. He made his way down that bluff, crossed the river, and continued on his task of striking a line that would become the officially recognized demarcation between the states of Illinois and Wisconsin, between the cities of Beloit and South Beloit. He walked across the small piece of land that is now the common park, which our two communities will share, and across that piece of land, he set down a line that would both separate our communities forever and fuse them together. It would become the only border of our city which cannot be changed, and it would forever influence the development and growth of our city. So I have to wonder by what tortured reasoning does one conclude that this is not an historical feature inherent to the area? In point of fact, this recommendation does meet the guidelines for naming parks, all procedures have been properly followed, and it appears to have with it no controversy or dissension. Therefore, I would fully support this proposal and intend to vote in favor of it, and I would urge my fellow council members to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dench. Additional counselor comments? Mr. Noonam?
I guess I won't respond too much. I think enough has been said about it. It's, there's nobody on the council, I think, that doesn't appreciate the process and the fact that we have so many citizens that do participate and have a great need for that to go forward, and the appreciation of what they bring forward. That being said, there are times when it's important to have a process, though, and not just rubber stamp things as they go along. And people feel that there are questions that are brought up, and there needs to be a longer process or a further review or not agree with it. That's part of the process, and that's the way it goes. and that's the way it goes. There are many people that could come forward that actually did live or actually contribute, as the language goes, to the community, both Beloit and South Beloit. Any of the major players from Beloit Corporation would certainly be appreciated in Beloit, South Beloit, and further on. So, there are potential candidates. One other thing that was brought up in the last debate was that no one would want this parcel named after them. I think people have now gone and looked at it, and you can see that what it's shaping out to be is a beautiful, beautiful park. It's going to be a great amenity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Noonam. Additional counselor comments? I have one, but I'll let everybody else go if you'd like to go first. All right. Well, my thought is, is that I appreciate the historical aspect of the investigation that's taken place, and certainly Mr. Lyon is a historical figure in our area. Ms. Kotkate's presentation or suggestion is certainly one that I take to heart. However, in March 18th of 1996, the council adopted administrative policy and guidelines for the naming of parks, and right under number one, it says responsibility. The Beloit City Council shall be responsible for designating names for all public parks and recreational facilities. The procedure has been followed. It went to the Parks Commission first, and then the Plan Commission, and the information came out, I think Mr. Dench is very accurate, 14 to 1, in favor of Lucius Lyon. I still struggle with the belief that it does not fit within the guidelines for selection of names. Number three of that administrative guideline says for location, such as the name of an adjacent street, or the related platte or subdivision, number B, for geologic, geographic, historical, botanical, horticultural, or scientific feature inherent to the area. Certainly, Mr. Lyon is a historical figure. I don't know that he rises to the level of being a historical feature. Number C, to honor a person or persons who make or makes a substantial contribution to the advancement, the improvement, or the enlargement of the Beloit Park system in the form of donated property or donated money for park purposes only. Sub D, to show gratitude to a person who, over a long period of time, has devoted outstanding amounts of time, talent, and effort to the advancement of the Beloit Park program or the Beloit community. In my view, the contributions that Mr. Lyon made are interesting. They're certainly meritorious of some sort of marking, plaque perhaps, but I don't think that this rises to the level of our guidelines, and I would intend to vote no. All right. Any additional counselor comments before I call a question? All right, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion to name the Colby Street facility Lucius Lyon, signify by aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Please tell me the nays, starting with Counselor Noonam. Nay. Counselor Johns?
Nay.
Counselor Van de Bogarde? Counselor Levy? For the motion fails, three in favor, four again.
Okay, well, the next item is a motion to adjourn.
Vote to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? Will the procedure now be then, this, this decision will be placed back at Parks and Recs, will they have the opportunity to revisit an alternate name to suggest to this body? Is that correct?
I'm not certain what the procedure is, Ms. DeForest. This is the first time this has come up for me. I don't know. It's not named that.
I guess I would, I would like to request that Parks and Rec have that opportunity to review an alternate name for this body, for that park, that they have that opportunity to participate again in the process.
Mr. Arf?
Well, you have, the council has two options, I think, here. Number one is you can refer it back to Parks and Leisure Services and ask that they consider new names, or just to leave it as the State Line Prairie for now, with no name on it, and the site would be available in the future for naming when and if it were appropriate or there was a need for some particular recognition. So, you have really two options, I think, is how you proceed.
All right. Mr. Dench, you indicated?
Well, it would seem, though, that you would still have to follow the procedure that's been laid out, which means that it begins with the Parks Commission again, so I think by rejecting this this evening, you've automatically referred it back to the Parks Commission.
That would be my assumption as well.
Additional consideration.
All right. Ms. DeForest?
I would just like to concur that even if it's not the procedure or policy, I would request that it is sent back to Parks and Rec for them to have another opportunity to visit it.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Dench?
Second.
And Ms. Johns, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Very well.